Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, I was. I was about to start the meeting, but I had to get the on-air sign up. So, good evening and welcome to our January 18th Committee of the Hole. We're light on, on council members, just as everyone can see. There's only one absence out in precaution for COVID-19 symptoms. And as a point of clarification and peace of mind, the other three absences are not COVID symptom-related. So, there is no pandemic or nothing to worry about in our city council chambers. We do keep a clean room and we try and stay hygienic. But we will move on with other housekeeping items for this evening. And there's a reminder that the floor will be open to the audience for 20 minutes to address city council members on matters that are on tonight's agenda, after the city council has discussed these items with staff. We do ask that if there are persons here this evening wishing to address the city council, that they keep their comments to five minutes. And that comments will be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor. And that profanity will not be accepted, tolerated, or used in any form. We have two items on this evening's agenda. In light of the absenteeism, unfortunately, I'm not sure if it does make sense for staff to have an indicator. We should absolutely discuss these items. We can take straw votes, but without a quorum and without a majority sample of where the council wants to go, we should take them with a grain of salt this evening. Just a forewarning on that. But moving on with the first item, we have a temporary suspension of water shut-off, city services for non-payment. And for this, I'll defer to Director Horn and Assistant Director Charlton when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be presenting this one for you tonight. In December of last year, I met with the Directors Committee for Jawa, our water provider. And during that meeting, we had just a peripheral discussion on this policy and what other communities were doing. And based on the feedback I had, it was sounding like a lot of the people had already gone back to eliminating their suspensions that they had put on. At the same time, shortly thereafter, our department, as you may recall, we deferred filling a water operations position for a variety of reasons. And we were looking at the impacts of that decision and how certain work tasks were affecting our operation. And I noticed a real big number was there. And that was a result of us now doing these tasks that used to be done by a part-time water meter reader. In doing that, I kind of was reminded of the fact that the city council had made this policy back in March of 2020. And we probably wanted to, based on previous conversations I had had, probably wanted to bring that to city council again, which is why it's before you tonight. Just as a reminder, the council at the end of March 2020 made a kind of an administrative policy to waive penalty fees and delinquent payments for those that might have been affected by the pandemic, the results of job loss, income loss, things like that. Excuse me. So, following that, following that research, we looked into doing a survey by other area communities, neighboring communities, and the remaining Jawa communities that weren't at that directors' meeting. And we found that all of the communities had reinstated their policies regarding delinquent payments and water shut-offs, penalty fees. And as a matter of fact, of the communities listed, only three extended into 2021. And those three were all reinstated by May of 2021. So, you know, after doing some additional research with the temporary city finance director, looked into the impacts of the policy and relayed that information in the council report and thought that it would be appropriate to bring it to city council and reevaluate that policy and determine if, in fact, we should reconsider reinstating that. One of the factors I recall from our meetings originally were discussions on the unemployment rate, which, based on the information in your council report, were noticeably higher due to the COVID pandemic. But those numbers, at least based on our most recent data, indicate that it's back to consistent percentages between 2010, '11, and 2014. Those rates were between 8% and 12%, and we're at 10% now, based on the June 2021 data. And, but obviously, if you look at the previous four to five years, they're dramatically lower. I would remind the council, though, it's based on the brief research I did, those were record-low numbers. So, I think the 8% to 12% number is more representative of what we would consistently see. And based on, again, research, a lot of our people who would have that historical knowledge are not here to gather that information. But based on our research, between 2010 and 2014, there were no policies in place to suspend those types of fees. So, I provided several questions at the end of the memorandum to go over with the council. I understand that we don't have a quorum, but we can at least get your questions and your thoughts about those questions and maybe revisit those at another meeting.
Thank you for that, Director Horn. Open the floor to the city council members for questions, comments, or concerns. Alderman O'Brien and Bessesi.
Great, thanks, Ms. Horn. Taking a look at this, I mean, the numbers certainly jumped out. I mean, in our packet, it's roughly, I mean, when we're talking penalties as well as lost revenue, we're talking $650,000. I mean, almost three-quarters of a million dollars. And so, based on just my thoughts on this, I mean, that's substantial. When we're talking about our budget, we held a zero property tax levy. We've got some other, obviously, expenditures and things like that that we're looking at. Just my initial in reviewing this, as well as the employment rate starting to stabilize, as well as what we always like to see what our fellow municipalities are doing, my thought on this is that, yes, we have to reinstitute collecting the fees. What my idea was, and I'm open to the other ones that are available to be with us tonight, is maybe we do a forgiveness on late fees and penalties and we just ask residents to come current or a payment plan. I saw the payment plan option, which I think is a great idea. I'm in full support of a payment plan by, and I just arbitrarily was thinking April or May. Is that, because I did see, is it the penalties, Director Horn? I was looking at a quote for about the $75,000 to $100,000 per year based on penalties, late fees. That, I think, number is negotiable, as we could possibly write that off. But certainly, city to run operations for water to the city and the staff that supports the water, I think we have to at least start covering our costs, the true cost of the water that comes every month in our bill. So, that was my recommendation or for discussion tonight, is I'm amenable to reinstituting the regular program, forgiving any penalties or late fees through April of this year and a payment plan be set up so we can start, rightfully so, collecting the revenue that residents have come to rely on for water. Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman, Bessesi?
Yeah. I would have more, just a couple of, before I could truly make the decision on this. Do we know, you know, what percentage of our households are current or within a month versus historical prior to doing this in 2020?
I don't have that information. I could certainly, I assume we could get that information through ERP to track it, the revenue collected year over year. I don't know that we have it per household. My assumption is it's just a, for lack of a better word, a pot of money that is either going to show high or low based on what we've collected in the past.
Because where I'm going with this is I do know there are a lot of people that are still affected, whether it be, you know, people with various, you know, conditions that just are nervous about getting back out in the public or whether, or for whatever reasons. But I'm just kind of wondering, historically, what do we usually trend, at least from a revenue standpoint, you know, delinquent payments? Maybe it's not even number of people, but it's, you know, if we took the revenues divided by the number of bills we send out and just kind of see what's, you know, how, are we way lower, which I'm going to suspect we are because we're not charging any fees and not turning off any water? I'm just very curious about that.
I can't tell you our water shut-offs average between 10% and 12% per month. So, between 100% and 20% and 144% per month, we do pretty consistently every year. And usually, the water shut-offs are as a result of non-payment.
So, it's 100% per month?
No, no, per year.
Okay.
Between 100% and 100%.
You're going to get through the community pretty quick.
10% to 12% per month. 10% to 12% per month.
Okay, so then it would kind of be, you know, with the current state, you know, how many people are at that point where we would have, we would have done that? You know, by now? You know, if we're finding that it's several hundred people versus the, even say, 20% per month, I'm going to assume it's going to be a three-digit number, but.
I believe we have like 6,500 accounts.
How many?
I think we have 6,500 accounts, water accounts. So, you know, annually, that's.
I would want to find a way to somehow phase it back. And maybe, like as Alderman O'Brien mentioned, you know, frankly, there probably are no late fees associated with any of these by this point because we were not charging late fees, right?
Yeah, I think.
It's just lost revenue because we weren't charging late fees.
Yeah, I think that's the point is, you know, and believe me, I didn't realize the number was going to be what it was either. But, you know, our costs are X, and we generally expect to collect that percentage, and we're not collecting that. And that's, it's a pretty significant number that I, you know, it's important for the council to understand that.
Yes, so I think another thing would be various options that we could let our constituents know about, you know. Sometimes when people hear payment plan, they think, oh, I got to get all current within two months or something like that. And I would assume some of these bills are getting up there. So, I'd like to at least work with people before we get to the point of starting to shut off. As far as reinstituting the late fees, I kind of think we should put a date out there and just say, as of X date, we're going to start doing penalties and come up with whatever rules. Now, if somebody's made absolutely no effort on a payment plan or is unresponsive and all that type of stuff, then you got to do what you got to do. But I'd like to still at least hear, you know, the residents out as far as reasons. And I know we've always been very accommodating, for the most part, for people, so.
I was just going to say, generally, I believe there's two months of notices that go out before a shut-off threat is made. So, you know, and again, as indicated in the memo, we'd be looking, the earliest this would be looking to reinstitute, and that's if you were all here and we got very clear direction on everything, was going to probably be April 1st. That would have been the earliest we would do it. So, again, thank you. It's not my belief that this is going to happen quickly. It's just the idea that it's going to take some front-end work for things like you're talking about, to notify those people who do have delinquent accounts, to let them know some of the information that we're looking at here. For example, you know, were the fees that have been accrued to date, were those going to be forgiven or not? Like, those are the kind of things the staff needs to be aware of so we can proceed accordingly to reinstitute the whole program, so.
One last question, and I'll be done. The, I'm sure there's several residents listening to this whole thing, some who may be in a situation, but is there, do they just call City Hall to make a payment or is there particular? Because I know we don't have the finance director right now.
Well, we're still taking money, though. The, yeah, we have several ways for residents to pay their water bill. I would recommend, though, at this point in time, until we get clear direction from the city council, which sounds like it might be in a month or so, I would just hold off on your calls until we have some clear direction and actually know how to direct and assist the residents.
Okay.
Yeah, as the amount, I don't know if the memo indicates, but we always, we have always had a payment plan. We have always worked with residents who are unable to make their payment. The idea is that a resident's making a good faith effort to be whole on their account. In those cases, we are always willing to work with those residents.
Okay, I'm good. Hopefully, I've answered most of these questions through my rambling.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. What I'd like to do is just, because there is an intimate group here, frame the discussion within the context of the questions that we do have proposed to us. Of course, I'm not asking for us to give direction. We will have a time for direction setting. Of course, we know tonight is not the ultimate time for that direction, but it's an indicator.
Sure.
As we look at the first question, and it says, should the city reinstitute the city's original policies related to delinquent payments? And I know we kind of touched on it just now between the two council members. There's some factors that we should consider, both internal and external. And you mentioned, Director Horn, that more than likely, we can have an answer from the entire council within a month or so. But the first question is that the month that we may wait between now and that future date, it shouldn't be that much more detrimental to the city of Rolling Meadows in the meantime, correct?
No, not for a month, no.
Okay. And in that time period, it may offer us the opportunity to now look back at those who are affected by this issue, by the pandemic, by the inability to pay their water bill or be on a payment plan and maybe identify if on that list, there are, and this is a poor choice of words, but chronic offenders or chronic participants in the water utility programs that are late habitually, or we've seen this trend pre-pandemic situation? And then look at the, those that maybe identify the folks on the list that we think are potentially taking advantage of the situation. And I'm not indicating that anybody is by any means, but there should be an opportunity for us to look at the data and see if there is a trend based on behaviors, based on their previous behaviors, and what we can anticipate moving forward. And then the third is to maybe identify those who are in a state of need and what other option we as a city may be able to implement that can help them out while we try and bring the policy forward so we can be congruent financially as we try and move forward to collect lost revenues. Does anybody have any other comments or feedback specifically on the reinstatement of the policy at this time? All right, then the next question, should the city reinstitute the city's original policy related to the payment fees? For this, maybe we should use this time to find alternate solutions. And maybe I've already discussed that as well. But if we can't go back to the original policies, what's the next best option from a policy perspective that maybe meets the best of both worlds versus just on or off, right? Or policy in place or policy not in place?
Okay.
Anyone in the council have any other thoughts on the original policy? Alderman Bessesi?
So, are you basically staying, you know, some sort of a partway?
Middle ground.
On that, so maybe, maybe we'll, we potentially could do, still do the shut-offs if, under certain circumstances, but maybe there's no late fees while people are catching up type of thing, or?
Yeah, and, you know, because it's kind of opaque to me specifically in terms of the individuals who we have on the list that are in this unideal position, right? I don't know who they are. I don't know if they've been in that position longer than the pandemic or as a result of the pandemic. And then I don't know if there are others whom we see maybe using this and taking advantage of the situation. And again, I'm not indicating or implying anybody is taking advantage, but we need to explore that. So ultimately.
A little bit more data around it.
Yeah, that way we can find opportunities for alternative solutions other than just either what we used to do or we shouldn't do anything at all at this time. Alderman O'Brien or Alderman McHale?
Maybe this is a question for Assistant Director Charlton. But when we do have residents that call that do indeed have a hardship, and let's say they can't come up with a payment plan, you guys work with residents in other ways to avoid shut-off penalties? Is that, or is it you come up with a payment plan and keep in touch with them? Like, how does this process work?
Yeah, so, generally, what happens, this is generally, this item would generally be brought to you by finance director.
Okay.
Because the entire process is usually run through finance. However, based on my understanding, the finance department makes several attempts over the course of several months to get payment made. Only when there is multiple attempts and continual either refusal to pay or late payments is the threat of a water shut-off pursued. And kind of water shut-off is kind of like the last-ditch effort, right? But yeah, and, you know, a lot of your conversation revolves on getting some analytics that I don't know that we will have. You know, unless we just start calling these residents all, it's not a small number of people. And so, I don't, you know, I'm kind of thinking through my head how we're going to determine whether, I know we have some trend data for a period of time regarding, to your point, Mayor, non-payment or late payments, kind of repeat offenders. I don't think that will be hard because our finance department is pretty attuned to that. I mean, probably could give me a list of them right off the top of their head. But beyond that number, I don't know how we are going to be able to tell whether someone has a, whether they have a true need or not. I mean, my hope is that most people are delinquent on their payment or lates on their payment or whatever the case may be because they truly can't make the payment. And I understand that. My only perception is that I don't know that the numbers that we're seeing now, today, are any different than they were six, seven, eight years ago. And so, you know, agreed that over the last year and a half, those numbers were dramatically different, right? But as of right now, I don't think those numbers are dramatically different. And so, and that's my only concern. And again, it's not that I am opposed to doing it. I just don't know how we're going to accomplish that. It's not a small number of people.
I just assume that if anybody has, if we put a letter in the next water bill that goes out or whenever we decide to do this, saying your fees are going to be, or the late fees are going to be reinstituted, however we decide to go about this, that people will go, oh, and pay. And people who truly have a hardship, they will call and say, I have a problem here. Can we please work this out? And obviously, we'll go about it in a way that it will be clear what steps need to be taken. we'll go about it in a way that it will be clear what steps need to be taken.
And I agree with that. I think the, I think the difference in the two scenarios is that process would happen after we got direction and reinstituted it. Then we would, of course, if someone's still having problems, we would, of course, work with them and either, like we said, payment plan, or maybe there's something else developed.
Right.
Where we could address those issues as they come in, as opposed to trying to determine what issues exist before we develop the policy. I think that's just going to be really difficult to accomplish.
Thank you.
Based on what we have.
Thank you for that question, because it tipped off another question procedurally. So, at the time of the council providing direction to suspend late fees and issues related to hardship, does that mean that the city staff in the Finance Department, who is the first line of defense to these matters, didn't necessarily field communication with an individual or a business or a household that was enduring this hardship? It was just documented missed payment or late payment or half payment?
I believe that's what happened. It's, I don't want to misspeak on behalf of the Finance Department, but based on the, based on the number, based on my knowledge of what it would take to get to that number, my expectation is that when someone couldn't make a payment, it was just noted as unpaid and just kind of tracked, kind of as in the whole number. And then we just, nobody, we didn't pursue any of the steps we would normally pursue to recoup that money. Now, as I think Alderman Sanoik asked some questions that we provided, ultimately, the city, you know, can recover those dollars through the real estate transfer stamp process and some other processes that happen when the house sells, but that could be, you know, 20 years from now, depending on how long someone lives here.
Thank you for that. And I think we will get to that portion of a conversation, of course.
Sorry.
No, not a worry. No, it's fine, actually, because it helps with this discussion at this point in time. So, does the council have access to that number of residents that are enduring the hardship? Do, can the council have visibility? I don't want to put the number on blast publicly, but to determine how many of them are residential versus business and identify then thereafter, if folks on that list have also been recognized or identified pre-pandemic as well, just to see if there are trends with certain households or certain businesses, to see if these people are historically, or these businesses are historically encountering hardships more frequently than before 2020. But can we have access to that number?
My expectation is we should be able to generate that information through our billing system. I'm just not proficient enough, and I don't think anyone here is proficient enough to be able to give you that answer tonight.
Sure.
Certainly, we could get that information to the city manager, and he can relay that.
Yeah, we'll follow up with our utility billing and finance staff on the question.
Maybe put in...
My assumption is if we can identify roughly the financial amount, we can also extract the lots that are associated with those fees. Yeah, I think it would be important for the council to have visibility to these numbers in their entirety and hopefully help provide greater clarity or opportunities to move forward as a result of having that information.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments regarding, we're still on the reinstitution of the policy. But if not, then we'll move to the third question, which is, was it the council's intent when establishing these policies to write off the lost revenue? And if that's the case, you know, there's a series of follow ups. If no, does the council have a timeline in mind to provide residents and businesses bringing their accounts up to date? I think if we utilize this time in between to get a little bit more clarity on the situation, number of those enduring this hardship, the blend between business versus resident, that can help us identify how we, if we do, pursue recapturing the revenue. But the follow up to the if no part, staff proposes two-month grace period to identify customers and allow staff to assist residents who may still need assistance in setting up the payment. I do believe that if we all collectively have access to how many people are actually, or how many households and businesses are actually encountering the hardship, we can help identify a process to connect with them individually or as well as we can, to then figure out what the next steps are for most of them, or all of them, or a small amount of them. But there's also a report from Cook County on June 24th that we all had received, and it had been presented to the City Council from Finance Director Gallagher through the DCEO. And on the fourth page slide, it does say that the American Rescue Plan Act, and page four of the slide, which I'll provide later, but we can use our American Rescue Plan Act revenue to replace public sector revenue loss. And we know that we have American Rescue Plan Act funding. We know that Cook County has funding that they want to trickle down to the member municipalities of Cook County. And we can use the money for lost revenues to support general government services and infrastructure as a result of the hardships in the pandemic. So, there might be a solution there as well.
Yeah. And just as a follow up, it's great that you brought that up. And I'm sorry, I don't have the specifics, but we do have one of our employees following up on a Cook County program that we can provide residents here. It's relatively simple application process that we can have the paperwork to just provide them where they can apply, and it will help them with payment of bills such as water bills. So, I don't know that we've actually provided that to finance. I know Ryan has put a lot of work into that, and I think we have it all set up. It's just a matter of, I think what we wanted to do, quite honestly, is wait for our new leader to be here and understand the program. And so, we'll definitely follow up with him on that program.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Just from my position, I think if the numbers are aligned in the sense that we are, we are back in a position pre-pandemic in terms of all the statistics before us, the City Council should explore reinstituting a policy that allows the city to capture revenue moving forward. I do think we have an obligation to our residents to identify those who are truly in need and find opportunities to assist them whenever and when at all possible. But I think we might need a little bit of time, and we also need other council members so that they can express the position from their constituencies as well. So, I think this month may buy us that opportunity.
Sure.
But I apologize that we can't give you greater clarity this evening.
No, it's fine. And I'm, you know, this is just something that I was, I mainly brought here in an effort to make sure it didn't slip through the cracks. And so, we knew what to do moving forward because with all the transition, it could have been months before we even thought about it. So.
Truly.
No worries there.
Thank you. Any other questions or direction advice that we want to lay out tonight?
Thanks, Mr. R. And Director Horn or city manager is up. Feel free to say, hey, we don't know. Let's check with the finance. So, this is, I'm going to call it a pass through, because I mean, it's not revenue strictly here, because we have our bill to pay to Jawa for the actual water services. For this roughly quarter of a million, that's just straight to the cost. Are we dipping in, like, obviously, we have that in the utilities fund, because that, like I said, that number was eye catching when we saw your great write up. So, clearly, we still are honoring our obligations, the city, to pay Jawa for providing us water. Are we just obviously using money that's in that account that we thankfully sold, thanks to all the great finance staff, had in, I'm going to say reserves, but had in the...
Surplus.
Surplus?
I, you know, I would just have to say, and maybe city manager would have thoughts, but I would think that would be something we would have to track back and look into. I don't think that we know absolutely.
Sure.
But my guess is that whatever we don't collect in revenue, we're taking out of fund balance.
Right. That's a big number to pull.
And given the fact that the utilities fund is an enterprise fund, and water revenue coming in must be respent on water expenditures, I would suspect that that is the case, that those funds are going through the utilities fund. And in part, it's paying for Jawa, but also in part for our time and infrastructure work to upkeep the water system as well.
Great. Thank you.
Any other points or clarity? Well, this evening, we can't give you direction, but hopefully, within the next month, if we have some other statistics accompanying the situation, we can provide you direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will bring us to the next item, which is a change of pace from the first item with water shut off. Cannabis dispensaries in commercial zoning districts east of New Wilkie. And for this, we'll defer to Assistant Director Charlton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you stated, this agenda item, the purpose of this agenda item is to gauge the council's interest in a staff or a city-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment that would allow these uses in commercial districts, specifically east of New Wilkie Road. We do have one cannabis dispensary in the community that's been here for a while, and it's transitioned from a medical cannabis facility to a recreational cannabis facility in 2020, when the governor signed into law the ability to transfer that to a recreational cannabis facility. So, at that time, and for several other instances where we've had businesses come forward with requests to modify our code, we have done text amendments that are specific to the actual requests that come before us. As you might recall, we did a cannabis craft grow facility text amendment for something on Bird Neck Street, which actually never came to fruition, but that text amendment is on the books. Our current code does allow for dispensaries only in M or manufacturing zoning districts and only as special uses. We did amend the code, as I mentioned, for the craft grow facilities, but all of the other types of facilities in the community, although identified in the text amendments, aren't specifically called out as permitted, with the thought being that we would do that as we got specific request. So, more recently, over the last several months, again, I think this is something being generated by the state and their changes and their policies, we're starting to get a lot of requests from dispensaries to locate in commercial zoning districts. And specifically in the areas, we've had them all over town, but in particular, east of New Wilkie Road. And in evaluating from a staff perspective, some of the concerns we heard about cannabis and video gaming and separations between certain sensitive types of uses, we felt that this was a good location to bring to council for your consideration. The area that's east of New Wilkie is largely bounded by large roads. We don't have close proximity to residential uses like we have in some of our other zoning, commercial zoning districts, for example, along Kirchhoff Road or Plum Grove Road. And when they are close to residential, they're typically across the road from residential, not immediately abutting a residential zoning district. So, again, we wanted to bring this to you. We outlined the main issues that we saw for your consideration. Permitted or special uses is something that we always look at. Permitted uses can happen by simply determining that it's a permitted use and then filing a building permit, whereas a special use would require a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission and approval of an ordinance by the council. We do continue to recommend that these uses be regulated as a special use because every location can have different impacts. And we feel it's important to make sure that the regulations that we've already put into place and the regulations the state has put into place are followed very carefully. Separations are, again, something that we pretty much got from the state when they first started regulating cannabis uses. Some of their earlier regulations had 1,500 or 2,000 or greater foot separations between cannabis uses and daycares or residential or churches. And over time, and in particular, when they went to the recreational cannabis uses, those separation requirements in the state laws were eliminated. So, they're still in our code, so we still do have a 1,000-foot separation requirement in our code, but they have been dropped from the state code. That is, with the exception of a state code that remains, which says that you can't have two cannabis uses within 1,500 feet of each other. But even in that case, the state has made some exceptions because one of the more recent changes that they made was to try and make these licenses that they have available to women and minority owned businesses. So, the social equity part of it has made it necessary for them to provide exemptions from that requirement. I think from our perspective, we looked at, again, noting the area, the commercial areas east of New Wilkie Road, being at least across the street from residential uses. If we kept the 1,000-foot requirement, we would run into residential uses in all, but maybe one or two parcels. You can pretty much draw a straight line from, you know, consider the Bonabeef site, which is along Gulf Road, kind of in the middle of that whole thing, and draw a straight line, and you'd probably still be within 1,000 feet of a residential property, whether it was in Arlington Heights, kind of to the northeast, or maybe to some of our multifamily projects on the west side of New Wilkie Road. So, we are asking for your consideration to remove that requirement, and that would only be applicable for right now in these commercial districts east of New Wilkie. You know, so whatever text amendments we're talking about would just affect this part, not some of the other requirements we have for manufacturing uses in the other districts where they've already been established. One of the other things that we get a lot of questions about is whether we could authorize these uses in multi-tenant shopping centers as opposed to a single tenant building with their own parking. Again, I think this is something that started out, that they wanted them on separate properties, but over time, those ordinances from the state have changed, and they are now allowed in multi-tenant buildings and able to share parking. The security, though, has not changed. That's one thing that the state has continued to be very strict on in terms of requiring cameras and security plans. I think I was even reading something recently that said, if your security camera goes down, the whole point of sale system just doesn't work. So, if you don't have your cameras running, you're not making sales. So, I think that the state continues to be very strict about those requirements. In terms of the process that we are anticipating, we, as you may recall, we've been touting for a while, about a year into our new zoning ordinance that we adopted about this time last year for our comprehensive zoning ordinance, to do an annual cleanup of things that we note throughout the year that are inconsistent or scribner's errors, or just kind of a long laundry list of things that need to come for cleaning up. We are, we have posted that public notice for the February Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and are proposing to kind of handle this text amendment at the same time. It's not part of the same petition, but we could actually do that at the same time or during the same hearing. I am not sure, you know, given that we don't have a consensus of the council present tonight. We do like to present this to you at COWS to give council an opportunity to say, yes, you're on the right track, or no, you're not on the right track. Let's just pull it and not spend the time on it. But at this point, you know, we have an opportunity, if you choose to go ahead and have the public hearing, and if council doesn't want to proceed with it, you can just vote on it at the time. Or we can say, we're going to, you know, hold off and have this conversation next month. So, I'll kind of be looking for some feedback from you on that process. So, again, just to summarize, the inquiries that we're getting from prospective cannabis businesses to locate on commercial property east of New Wilkie Road cannot be handled under our current code. So, the only way we can do that is to process a text amendment to allow them as special uses in these commercial districts. I don't know, you know, this is kind of one of those things where the state releases licenses and says, this is our new date, and then everybody scrambles really quickly and wants to have things done and answers very quickly. It kind of seems like that pressure point is out there because we got a lot of questions at the same time. So, I just wanted to kind of make you aware of that urgency. I did put together a list of some decision matrix questions that will help guide your discussion about whether we should proceed with this text amendment with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then if yes, some of the answers to those issues that I outlined for you, processing them as special uses, the separation requirements, and then whether or not we can look at them in multi-tenant... or not we can look at them in multi-tenant shopping centers with shared parking. And then just generally looking for some general additional feedback from you if you have any other questions. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for that, Assistant Director Charlton. First and foremost, as the council knows that the sixth ward is not here this evening, which this specific region is in question and discussion, and it would make sense to at least hold off on the finality of this conversation until they're back with feedback from their direct constituents. Of course, this impacts the entire city at large. But again, if we could mirror what we did with the first subject and just take these questions if yes and the sub-questions contextually, and just discuss any aspects about them, and then after that, provide subsequent direction from our positions and know that it's just from our myopic position here in absence of the remaining members. I have a different perspective that I'll share at the end with my concerns, but at this time, I'll open the floor for members of the council with any of your questions or concerns. Alderman Bessisi, I saw you had your hand up right away.
Oh, okay.
So go ahead, and then we'll go through these A through D components and discuss them.
Okay. Really, the thing I see here is, and you did bring this up, is the elimination of the 1,000-foot separation of some of these things could impact our neighbors, Arlington Heights and others. Do we know what their rules are?
I do not. I did not look up what their current rules are, but generally, most are following what the state requirements are over time. So they could have a hybrid like we do. We still have 1,000 feet in our manufacturing district, but based on newer, more recent requests, people are making changes. I can check specifically with Arlington Heights and bring that back.
Yeah, that would be, I think that's the only community, actually, I think, three sides of this east of New Wilkie is Arlington Heights, and then the other side is us. Right? So, okay, that was it. I was just wanting to make sure that we did that because I think, you know, as good neighbors, we should at least find out what their policies are.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for that. So with the first question under line item A, is the entire area east of New Wilkie Road to be eligible, or should properties within the frontage on New Wilkie across from multifamily be excluded? Are there concerns or positions on that component here, this question here, the entirety of east New Wilkie Road? Alderman O'Brien?
My only thought for consistency-wise is, then this has gone back a while to when we talked about this in the cultivation site and all that type of stuff. I did not hear from residents directly on this topic tonight, so I'm going back in the time machine. Is they, overall, the handful or so that reached out were supportive of this. They actually asked, when are we going to get dispensaries? So again, it was not tied to this one, it was more tied to when the cultivation plant was going to go in north of where Nature's Care is now. I just don't know, from a consistency perspective, how we could treat this different than we did video gaming. Since video gaming's on the east facing the residential portion on Wilkie, I think, just from my own perspective, from a consistency perspective, we might get in some hot water quite quickly. I know it's in our jurisdiction as the council to do that, but I could see us getting in some hot water quickly, saying, yep, we'll allow two gaming places facing the residential, but no dispensaries, you can't. That's my only thought on that. I'm okay with it being available or being eligible along that side of the street.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. I would concur with you in saying that the entire area east of New Wilkie Road should be accessible to this situation. I'm also going to make some comments here that, you know, this is the subject and this is the time. And let me start by saying that at this time, it's not an advocacy of cannabis or any other vice, but there have been legislative changes, and it's time that we do look at these subjects with eliminated hypocrisy around them in the context of other vices. Again, I'm not condoning any one vice by any means, and I'm not saying to ignore the adverse effects that any one vice can offer, but specifically with cannabis, we know we can go to a grocery store that backs up to a school, and you can pick up a case of alcohol, or go to a gas station on the corner and pick up a case of alcohol or a pack of cigarettes. Again, to each their own, but I'm not advocating it this time. But I think if the legislation has changed where we as a state and as a community recognize that it's legal for recreational use and has been permitted prior to that therapeutically through medical use, we should not inhibit the opportunity for establishments to come in and allow the benefits that users receive regardless of, again, adverse reactions and effects that do come in these territories. But I think we should not eliminate areas within this region. I think we should open it in its entirety. The council and their thoughts about processing as special use. So Alderman O'Brien, go ahead.
I'm in full support of the, I should thank staff, City Manager Savo and the other staff that I talked to today on this, so I appreciate all your help through this. I'm in full support that they treat it as special use, like from a number perspective and approval perspective and all that. I like the special use.
I agree that identifying these institutions and entities through a special use process is appropriate for tracking, management, and overall continuity and coordination within the city.
Agreed, too.
What I would like to see is that the process through this special use process, right, redundant, doesn't inhibit the ability to create business development in this arena for both the city and the businesses, right? I don't want to tie their hands, and I don't want to make it too taxing on staff through these processes. Alderman Bessisi or McHale, do you have any thoughts that you want to share regarding special use?
Yeah. The only thing with considering, and I would be in favor of special use, but one thing in considering it is, with it being a special use, is it going to be one of those things that, how do I say this, is more or less rubber stamped every time going through? I'm assuming the special use will be mainly just to make sure their Ts are crossed and their Is are dotted when doing, when wanting to do this. Because it comes into a fairness question.
Well, so I want to just be clear, and I know you're not insinuating this, but the rubber stamping of a special use, you know, staff doesn't just cut corners and rubber stamp. We as a council don't just blindly approve because if it's a process.
Absolutely not. I didn't mean to intimate that in any way.
Of course not. And I'm just clarifying for everybody in future.
Especially with all my years on the Planning and Zoning Committee.
But to that point, Director Horn, do you have any insight or input you'd like to share?
Yeah, I can hear Joe Ellen answering through my ear, but I think absolutely opposite. We refined our processes to bring applicants through as quickly and expeditiously as possible, but it also allows us to look at each individual property and assess it's on its own merit. And so where you might have concerns regarding landscape screening or parking requirements or impacts to other businesses or signage requirements, those cannot be boilerplate across the board. They're going to be looked at individually, and that's what I think the special use provides our staff that other, I know you didn't mean, but like rubber stamp or just run through approval processes will not allow. So I think the special use, based on what you say your concerns are, will absolutely address those things, so.
Yeah, the only reason I brought that up, and I was not intimated that anything is rubber stamped, but in fact, I think sometimes it's scrutinized more than you would think you should. But with that said, we have had other things that have been special use that are, you know, it got to the point where it was a frequent request, it was fairly routine, so we just made changes to the, to make it so it was no longer a special use.
Yeah, I'll just say since.
This would not apply here.
Yeah, well, and just in general, and I understand the historical perspective that you have that I don't, but I know that we've worked really hard, especially since Joe Ellen's come aboard, to have integrity in our processes and do them quickly but effectively. And so I don't think those same historical concerns exist today, especially with processes that go through the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, and it's apparent that our processes validate the outcome, and I think it's in our best interest to continue with having a special use process.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't mean to make the mountain out of a molehill.
Moving on to the next line item C, I have a quick question for clarification regarding, can the 1,000-foot separation requirements be removed? Now, is this specific 1,000-foot separation requirement in conjunction with schools and churches, or is this within conjunction with dispensary to dispensary? Or what is that 1,000-foot separation embody?
Specifically, what the city has continued to have in its code, which is 1,000-foot separation between schools, churches, daycares, and residential uses. The one thing that it won't affect, because it can't affect, we can't be, we can't take away a state requirement, so the state requirement that there must be 1,500, so not 1,000, but 1,500-foot separation between two individual cannabis uses, that one has to stay.
And that's where I was going with this, is I would prefer us to keep some measures to maintain distance among these operations so that we don't have saturation, right? But again, going back to my first point, not advocating anything, but I think it's time for a societal or cultural evolution on this situation, subject not being so taboo, accepting the legislative changes, and also evolving with those changes so that they are congruent with other vices that are available, like schools, the grocery stores in schools where you can get beer. We should not look at this any differently unless there is a clear and present danger known about these distances and the measures that we should take. Do we know of any dangers? I know the state's moving away from this. I believe we should as well. It should be abolished. But are we aware of any issues that we should consider? Even if the state does decide to abolish it, should we hold on to it?
Do you, can you speak to any problems we've had with any of our cannabis dispensaries?
Sure. Currently, we obviously have one distribution establishment in town. We have not had any issues, you know, a couple minor calls, but nothing I would say that would be a chronic nuisance to residents or individuals that visit Rolling Meadows. So like I said, regarding that question, I'm not aware of any specific thing that I could think of out of hand. I think each case we'd have to look at based on its location, and I say some of the unique features that surround that location.
Thank you, Chief Newackey.
I just wanted, you made a good point. I don't think I expanded on it during my presentation about having concentrations of cannabis uses. Our code currently does have, and we're not proposing to change, a limitation of one cannabis use with the understanding that it would be much like the liquor code is. So every time a new use comes in, we would, as part of the special use, also have to increase the number from one to two, or two to three, or whatever it is, and that gives you the ability to determine whether there's adequate spacing or placement throughout the community.
And that's a great safeguard. It's appreciated, thank you.
Sure.
Any other thoughts or comments from the council regarding the 1,000-foot separation requirements? At this time, of course, we wait for the council in their entirety, but I think we should follow the state's lead on this, and my personal position is we need to evolve societally and accept the changes and do our best to manage and maintain them. The final line item, D, can the uses be accommodated in multi-tenant shopping centers with shared parking in new commercial areas defined to allow dispensaries? Before I open this up to the council, the staff, Assistant Director Charlton, the Planning and Zoning Department, or Planning and Zoning Committee, or the Planning Department, do we forecast any issues if the council was to allow the multi-tenant shopping center option? Do we foresee anything? What is your perception?
I don't, only because some of the 110 that are in the state already have come in in multi-tenant situations in towns that are regulating them quite well. And they readily point to those, and they're able to meet the safety requirements. You know, I think at first, they were like, well, how do you ensure that there's, you know, no crossover passages between spaces and common buildings? And, you know, they come up with, they follow the requirements that the state has for safety, and they're able to modify the buildings to accommodate those safety requirements.
Okay. So from our professional perspective, that and the current pattern of behavior with these institutions within multi-tenant spaces, this isn't an issue that we should be cautious about?
And I think it's probably better in a situation where you have, you know, high-density commercial, a lot of activity than it would be than, you know, if you're kind of a lone, standalone building on a quiet road.
In a dark manufacturing alley, right?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I was just going to add, you know, as you're all aware of the properties that exist over there, the commercial properties, there is almost entirely shared parking with big, giant areas of parking, so the idea that someone would be, a neighboring business would be impacted by too much parking would probably not result in that, in, I would say, 85 or 90% of the available spaces in that area, because there are large, very large parking lots immediately adjacent to almost all of those shopping areas. So just something.
Yeah, our review of parking as part of the special use probably won't be one of quantity, but one of, you know, access and circulation and separation.
Okay. So more on the logistics aspect, traffic flow. Any thoughts or positions on this multi-tenant aspect from council members here? Okay. The last thing, and it's not necessarily a decision item this evening, but having entertained dispensaries, cultivation centers, and possible cannabis lounges, is there anything the council should be thinking about proactively in allowing this mix of use in areas? And what sort of parameters we should put around them if we had a cultivation center, and then months later, a year later, dispensary wants to open up in the area because the market is good, even though it's completely different market capital than cultivation, and then later on, one of those cannabis lounges wants to open up? Should we be thinking about this?
So I think the approach that we're taking here is a bit of an incremental step towards evaluating the cannabis policies and how we handle this as a land use matter. As we evaluate, I think, you know, this certainly isn't a finality, this certainly can come back over time and be revisited by the council. You know, I think the question of cannabis lounges, we haven't quite seen that play out necessarily in the area near us that we have seen, but.
The reason I asked Manager Savo is because all three of those establishments have entertained my ear, and they've all explored the same area, which is the area in question. And so I want to raise the conversation now. I don't know that we need direction or that we need to focus in on it, but I do know firsthand from the outreach that's been had to me, that all three of these entities are interested in exploring Rolling Meadows, and all three are specifically interested in exploring that region, given the logistics opportunities that exist there as well. And so it's just a matter that we should keep on our radar.
Sure.
Though we don't have to answer anything this evening, but has staff considered it in any capacity so that we can provide feedback?
So we certainly can begin to evaluate it. At this time, we've been focused more on the dispensary inquiries that we've received, and so we can certainly return to the council with a little bit more information on those uses as well.
That would be helpful, especially from your chairs, where you sit on a daily basis operationally. Any other questions or comments, or moving on to the second line item, which is other feedback or direction?
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I just get clarification on one item?
Sure.
Because we had some great conversation on items A through D. I just want to make sure that staff is clear. If we bring this to a public hearing as we presented it today to you with the feedback we've received, the council will have an opportunity to still provide feedback. The council members who aren't here can provide feedback. We can change it. All those things can happen. I just want to make sure that we're okay, there's no one adamantly opposed to us holding the public hearing to at least present this issue as a discussion point so we can then move on to the next step. We kind of glossed over that, and I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, with the preface specifically in the sixth ward, given that this is their region and the constituency that would be most directly impacted by these behaviors, I do know that there is. I do know that there is no opposition in moving forward with the hearing and with entertaining the conversation to find the best option forward for the city and for the residents and for business development. As far as the other three, the Second Ward, the Fourth Ward, and the Seventh Ward, I don't know that I can answer that or that the council can answer that in all honesty, but I believe that they're willing to support the conversation, and of course, we can work as a council to come to a consensus that works.
And again, the council have complete ability to reject everything that was presented. This just allows us to take advantage of noticing it and holding the public hearing. So I assume that you're okay with that, then.
Yeah, from this chair, I'd like to see a show of hands from the three individuals up here, and that should help. They're all three are unanimous.
I appreciate that, sure.
Thank you. Any other comments or conversations on this item, on cannabis dispensary and commercial zoning districts? No? Okay, then I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman McHale. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.